Welcome to the UNO School District Board of Education Work Session. Today is August 13th, 2025. The meeting is being held at the UNO School District Offices located at 826 South 1500 East, Naples, Utah. Present at this meeting, Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Troy Timothy, Business Administrator. The time is 4:01 PM.
It's going through my head. There we go. New mics, don't know how to operate them. We're up and running, Kent. I never do things the way I'm supposed to. I'm not going to start tonight. Mallory? She's our new principal, Mazer Elementary. What's your last name? Welcome. We're glad to have you here. We're going to have a reverence by Emily Arnold, Principal at La Pointe. Yeah, but it was really easy. I done it. Just push the button.
Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together and to discuss education in the UNO basin. Please bless us to be mindful of the things that our students need and help us to be kind to one another. In Jesus' name, Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Principal. Okay, we're going to jump right into policy revisions, policies for approval on first reading. The first one, Troy Timothy, our Business Administrator is going to take it for community use of school facilities.
Thanks, President. We are, for this first reading, we are combining actually two policies together. It's our revised policy for the community use of school facilities. A little bit of background, we needed to do some updates because Utah code has changed. We have some grammar and different language that was corrected and some things were clarified that were a little bit vague in the past. We enhanced our liability coverage because that's always evolving and changing. We wanted to make sure that we are covered correctly for when people use our facilities. And then some terminology has changed, some outdated references. We have recently, this summer, implemented a new event manager software that will be used going forward to schedule our school facilities. That's been spearheaded by my Secretary Holly Shivers, and she's done a great job with that, by the way. And we just needed to make some changes and refinements. Prior to this, we had a separate fee schedule, and we're combining the two things together. The fee schedule, we're not changing any of the fees. We did eliminate, however, it was very confusing, and there were a lot of things kind of jammed together. We removed kind of a mid-sized charge. It's either a small group or a large group, but everything else should be the same. And this will be really good as far as just trying to get our integration with everything that's going on. It clears up some things. It gets things aligned with our new event manager software, and it's going to be a much better, clearer, easier-to-access policy for our community users and our district users of our facilities. Does anybody have any questions about this?
So, 1.4. It switched from referring to the Procedures Manual to spelling out commercial users using a certificate of insurance for liability.
Yes.
Is that consistent with what we've done in the past?
On the previous, it was in our, it referred to our financial manual, and I believe that we have changed our insurance requirements. It's now, it's a million dollars per occurrence, $3 million total that's required. This is consistent with model policy that's been used throughout the state. And it just provides a, it's a pretty standard boilerplate type of policy for events and activities.
But it isn't what we've done in the past?
Do we know the exact amount before?
Before it said that potentially there was no liability insurance, but after it was imposed, that's not.
So the state risk will cover school activities that we use the school facilities for. We're covered under our state risk policy, but for community members, we've discovered that if they come in and something happens on school grounds and they are uninsured, it could open us up to some potential liability situations. And so for events and things that they use, would use our facilities for, they need to have some insurance coverage.
With this impact, I just know a lot of people in the community do use the facility for things like dance recitals and things. Would that potentially be a problem?
That's my thought exactly. I was kind of curious with that. Because most of them are not insured.
So typically, for community use of facilities, it falls under the civic law. So they're using it as a civic center, and then they don't have to have liability insurance. For commercial-type events, they do. And most of those people have already been providing evidence of that insurance.
Okay, so dance recitals don't fall under commercial?
They would.
I was going to say, anything that makes, any organization that is non-
If they're making money.
Profit?
Yep.
So nonprofit organizations are considered civil?
Yes, nonprofits fall under a different statute.
Is it stated here? I didn't recall. Sorry, take over there. I didn't recall seeing that.
The statute?
Yeah, the non-
So if, in one of the first few paragraphs, it refers to Utah statute, I think it's 11 dash something? Yes.
But are, but the dance companies have been already providing this insurance in the past? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good. I just didn't want to cause a big problem.
Yeah, if they're just there for practices or something, they don't have to. But if they're there for like a giant thing, then they've been providing it.
Okay.
If these people are operating as businesses, they've already got business insurance, and this would kind of fall under their policy generally.
But it might raise the amount they're insuring for, possibly?
Actually, believe it or not, insurance for specific events, especially if they juice it up, isn't that much liability. I was kind of surprised. It's not a huge burden. Like, it's going to cost them hundreds of extra dollars to do an event or something like that. It's not like that. It's pretty cheap, actually.
Thank you. Sorry.
If you'll stay, so clarify for practice versus for actual event?
So if they're there just practicing, basically if there's an admission fee charged to the event, that's, we consider it commercial. If not, we don't.
That's a, do we have, did we lose? We turned it down.
I think they just turned the gain down, so we quit echoing. A tiny bit, I think, Shawna?
So is that clarified in this policy somewhere that I missed? I went through it, but I didn't see that.
It's not to the level that you're asking about. We could add that so that it's very defined.
Yeah, I think that's where Tanya was getting was-
Yeah, basically, we said, we kind of direct them to the state code.
So does that state code? I did not go to the state code, sorry. I didn't look at that. I just assumed it was.
No. So I can add that language, though.
The problem we've got to find the balance with is if we get overly prescriptive, then if any little thing changes, we have to redo our policy every single time. So-
Well, I just want it for clarification for us, because nine times out of 10, these individuals will call us as board members and say, why can't we use that? Now we have to pay a million-dollar liability or $3 million liability insurance. What did you do? And so at least that clarifies it for us, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, my goal is to utilize, let the public utilize the buildings as much as possible. And I don't want to deter that in any way, deter that in any way. If they see that they have to have that insurance, but if it sounds like some of these, and I don't know other than dance, maybe some, I don't know. Have we had any other activities in our? Oh, well, we have. We've had like the softball that comes up and uses the outdoor facilities.
Recitals.
Mostly concerts and things are what this will-
Holly's aware of all those.
I'm sorry that I didn't see this in Policy Committee. I missed that.
That's okay.
Sorry to bring it up now and just throw it at you, but I appreciate it.
One nice thing, too, is the new event manager software allows a portal that community members can upload all their insurance documents, everything that they need to submit. It's all in a nice place where they can put it all in from their end, and some, we don't, things don't get lost in the shuffle anymore, and they can save it there for the next time they do something. So it's all, they can create a profile, and it's pretty slick.
So great. Yeah, we've had some challenges. I think all of us in this room are aware, some students that have been charging fees for doing maybe coaching, younger students, and doing those type of things. I assume this helps us clarify that that can't be done. My assumption is it would help clarify that.
Yes.
Point one. And also the inflatable part. Did you guys work that out? You talked about it in Policy Meeting Bingo.
Bingo was on the state model policy, and the inflatables was per our state risk.
I don't believe Grad Night is sponsored by the school district, though.
Isn't it kind of a parent association thing that uses the building?
But they're not gambling money, though, either, when they do it. They can play games of chance if they're free.
I know at least one elementary school uses bingo for their fundraisers.
I just wondered why that specifically was.
Those considered games.
I think Policy Committee, if you, I thought you talked about it, so maybe you can, raffles, bingo, inflatables.
And the inflatable thing is, that's state risk mandated. Like, we, our insurers will not cover us if we have inflatables out on the blacktop, because they've had instances where you can't stake them down, gust of wind carries kids away, and you get hurt and things like that, and so.
So I guess when they come and use our building, I mean, obviously, this is our policy for us, but anyway, I just wondered, you guys talked about it, and it's still in there, so.
We did talk about it. I don't remember. We just had question about the definition of, yeah, exactly.
So I did look into it and make sure that that's what the state policy does say, and it does. So we felt that if the state model has it, we should have the same language.
So what difference that, skill of any sort? So does bingo have a skill to it?
A skill?
How fast you can stand your thing? Hand-eye coordination.
If there was a skill to that or gambling, if you were a counter, then it wasn't, it was a skill. So I don't know. That's how I see a lot of people get out of it in these things. Takes some-
Community use versus, I don't know, I think, just need to go back to committee and work it out. Second reading.
So we could use it for a fundraiser, maybe, but not-
That's what I'm curious.
But not let other businesses use it or organizations use it.
Cornhole and some of those things that went on fundraisers and that.
It doesn't say cornhole. I mean, why are they, whether that's specific?
Just the raffles.
Love you, raffles.
Sorry.
So in Policy Committee, we talked about, this is, this policy is for community use, which is different from using our buildings for school use, for an approved fundraiser, per se, for a school. This directs community usage, not necessarily school usage. So Grad Night, as far as Grad Night goes, I did meet with state risk before the last Grad Night, and there are some inflatables that are approved, as long as there's protective gear worn and appropriate supervision. Some inflatables are approved as per state risk, but not for community use. So that's, that's the difference, is if it's a school-sponsored event or a school-approved fundraiser, but this policy is specifically for community use. That was our discussion in Policy Committee, is differentiating between the two.
So Grad Night, those community use, and that's actually student safety, right? Because we're trying to keep kids safe on Grad Night.
I think the big thing with inflatables is the bouncy house thing. So that's where they really said no. But if you're doing like sumo or those Velcros, where you run and stick yourself against the wall, that kind of stuff, they're okay with that. Any other questions? We can do some clarifying. We might even, it might even be worth a conversation with our attorney the next time we talk to him, just to, I think, to go through a few of those things to make sure we have it represented correctly. So we'll commit to doing that.
I think it's good for first reading, and we can look into some of those things before next.
Okay. We're not going to let you off the hook. Troy, the next one's yours also.
Pending approval of Board Minutes.
No. Facilities and ground use fee schedule.
Yeah, that's the same, so this is the same policy. We're combining the two. And so we're going to, prior to this-
A and B are together?
Correct.
I apologize.
So if you go to the very end of this policy now, it looks kind of like this, where it's red because it's all change or new, but it's got the fees, it has some notes, like these are all hourly rates unless otherwise worded. And we do, we do have some differences, like non-commercial, youth K through 12 versus, you know, government charitable, like commercial use. So that we, for a lot of things, for youth K through 12, non-commercial, it's free. And then we've got fees associated with some of these other things.
Board members, any questions about the fees?
So you're saying the fees didn't change in any way? That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay, we're good then. We can carry on. Okay. Number C, Certified Employee Evaluation. Dr. Lee's?
Okay, so this is the policy for Certified Employee Evaluation. This is our tree, teacher evaluation system, that has been a long time coming. You can see in the memo, I just outlined briefly, and you've seen a lot of information on this, a lot of data, a lot of, we've done a lot of surveys with our teachers. So in 2223, we did the pilot in three of our schools. In 2324, and this last year, we piloted in all of our schools. And so by state, by state code, we, and state board rule, we need a policy in place now. So also, I sent you a copy of an email from Julie Lundell. She is at the state office over teacher evaluation. I sent our policy to her. One of the reasons I wanted her to look at it is because we're participating in the Teacher Merit Program. That program requires us to have four levels. At the end, in your final evaluation, it requires us to have four rating levels. Right now, state code requires us to have three. That's still up for debate, and in her email, you can see that it's something that may change over time. But she felt like our policy addressed it well. It allows us to use four ratings. That's how our, is currently set up for this school year, is to have four ratings. And then we can just watch and see what the state does. We can change back to three if we want to. After we, the TMA, this year is the data collection year for that program, and that evaluation rating weighs into those Teacher Merit awards. So this policy is also based off of model policy from the state with a few little changes so that it's also in alignment with what we're doing here in our district. When we looked at it in Policy Committee, for those board members who are on Policy Committee, you'll, you can, you'll note the few changes that we made. It made a couple of references to Policy 0051200, which is the standards of conduct and due process when we need to take job action on a teacher or put them on a plan of assistance. I've made reference to that, that policy. And also in Section 3.1, where it talks about having a program committee, we adjusted that. So moving forward, anytime we want to, if we want to adopt a different program or a different evaluation system, then a committee will need to be formed in order to do that. That's work that we've done over the course of the last few years. We've tried to be ahead of the state with our system. So any questions for me on this policy?
Board members, any questions for Dr. Lee's? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next one's yours, too.
Okay, so this one is Policy 0050675, the Association Lead Policy, in light of the referendum that was submitted for House Bill 267, and we have reviewed the Governor's Executive Order. We're going to ask that this policy, or this be tabled. That referendum puts this House bill on hold, and it will be up for public vote in the November 2026 election.
So we would just need in this meeting to table it, right?
Yeah, we would just motion to table it.
And what that means, board members, is the existing policy would just continue until further notice?
Because remember, the makes, the current law that was put forward can avoid until-
Yeah, so the bill, yeah. I, at last minute, I thought we should have put a link to that executive order in the Board Docs. We don't, but I, we could send it out to you. But it is very specific in the executive order that the House Bill 267 is, what's the wording, not in effect?
It says, "House Bill 267 will not take effect unless and until it is approved by a vote of the people in the 2026 general election." And that's the end of his Governor's Executive Order.
2026?
Six, yeah.
Okay, board members, so in the business meeting on first reading, we can approve all the policies on first reading, but number D needs to be pulled or put on hold, whatever the proper language is, because it is listed on the agenda in the business meeting, 202, number D. Am I correct, Dr. Lee?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. So we can all stay straight. We ready to move on from there? Thank you, Dr. Lee. I'm going to take care of the next one all by myself. Policies for approval on second reading. There is none. So items, number three, items requiring future board action minutes. Troy, Timothy?
Sure. All requested corrections to the June 18, 2025 board meeting minutes have been completed and posted in diligent community. I used to say in Board Docs, but diligent community. With no further concerns, I recommend the board approve the minutes as presented.
Any changes or corrections or additions to the, so we're doing the work session and the business meeting minutes. Board members, you'll change what needed to be done already? Okay, thank you, Troy. Early learning plan, plan. Jaime Laba?
I think we skipped over-
Skipped over the-
Did I skip one?
Contracts.
Contracts, I'm sorry. Contracts meeting board approval.
Very simple.
I got to decide whether I'm watching the paper or the computer one.
The Maintenance Department, on behalf of the UNO School District, they complete quarterly preventative maintenance on all chillers district-wide. After obtaining two quotes for the service, the district has been offered a locked-in rate of $2,540 annually from MHI service if a four-year agreement is signed. So it's a very modest amount for them to check all of our chillers throughout the district. But we have to be on a four-year contract, so the total contract value would be right around just a little over $10,000 for four years. If they have any questions about the contract?
Okay. All right, Jaime, now I believe it's actually really your turn.
Good evening? I think it's evening, late afternoon. So the early learning plan, that's required to be approved by the board before September 1st every year. The reason the state put this in place was they wanted districts to make sure that, at least for early literacy and math, that they were providing curriculum that met a certain standard. They call it evidence, evidence bait, evidence, hold on, I get confused with evidence-based curriculum. We have two curriculums, CKLA and Ready Math. And then they ask, what types of interventions, intervention programs do you use? And again, they want to get away from districts and teachers just using, you know, programs such as teacher-paid teachers and just creating, that might have been practiced previously, but the state has moved away from that. They require us to set at least two goals, this year, two math goals. And then you can, as you can see, in the, in the plan, requires me to be able to verify that we are using programs that meet this standard. And I think you're well aware that we are using these programs. You've seen in our learning data across the gamut from K-12 that we are moving in the right direction, especially K-3. So we are moving in that, in that direction. So that's kind of the gist of why the early- So that's kind of the gist of why the early, early learning plan must be approved by the board every single year. They want to make sure that, that we're guaranteeing that we're providing the best possible curriculum for these students.
Board members, any questions for Jaime?
No, just a lot of hoops to jump through for this form.
It's changed. It used to be, I used to fill something out. Now it's more of a survey. I don't know if you remember from last year, this format is entirely different from last year's, and so...
All good? Todd?
Yep.
Thank you, Jaime.
Thank you.
Adoption of tax rates for fiscal year 26, Troy?
I don't have another one in there.
So... What, what we need to do is, because we... Todd, can you go out and talk real quick?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, I thought Troy said we skipped another one.
Okay. Well, I thought it was a diligent problem, sorry.
No, no, we're good, I think. Because we had the judgment levy hearing last week, we, we have to formally adopt our tax rates. Nothing has changed from the June board meeting as far as the tax rates are concerned. We just need to, in the, in the business meeting, we'll need to formally vote on and adopt those rates for the, for the coming school year. Does anybody have any question about the rates? I know we couldn't vote on the actual judgment levy rate, which is, I believe, point triple zero, six-five percent of the tax base or whatever.
Point triple zero? Right.
That was, you were saying, Troy, that was actually in our original budget, just voted on?
Yeah, we did, we, we did, we have to officially vote on all of those rates now, not on behalf of, because we couldn't use the...
We didn't vote on any of the rates, right? Is that, at that time?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Yep, I'm good.
Everybody good? Number four, informational discussion items, PBIS data report, Ryan?
Yeah, so this, when it comes up, this came about just on, we have PBIS plans that are approved by the board every year, looking at schools. And came about, like, what are we doing with them? What progress are we making? So this is just your graduation attendance and suspension trends? And, you good? Okay, so graduation rates were consistently at 88%. That's, that's really not bad, but we want it better, and the state also wants it better. So that's a good piece to focus on. And then attendance rates fell sharply after pandemic years. We have a high level of chronic absenteeism. And suspension rates showed a downward trend, peaking in 2022, not 2021 on this one. And we'll go to the next. So we are consistent, 88.1 to 88.8 on our graduation rate in the last five years. Our chronic absenteeism took a dip in '21, and now we're sitting 39, 38, 37 the last three years. Safe school referrals peaked at 91. In the last two years, it has decreased, but we still have those as something we are concerned about. This is right now, the CRDC, that's the Civil Rights Data Collection. This is our data from 2022. We just submitted 2024. They are now requesting, if approved, that it become every year, which is meaningful data. It's a fairly large yearly task, but that's something that may happen. But we have 149 out-of-school suspensions, 88 in-school suspensions, and four total expelled. As of 2024, we didn't have any expulsions. We provide educational services differently, but we do not formally expel without educational services. Then average days missed, number of days for out-of-school suspensions, arrests, total referrals, the law enforcement, average transfers to alternative schools. And we have educational options, such as AVEC, but we are not technically an alternative school within that, because, because it's a standard school facility, it just is our alternative. And then the law enforcement data, that's just, it may have actually increased since we've increased SROs in the last couple of years. So really, are you guys hearing me all right? Okay, so really, the goals of PBIS, foster a positive school climate, establish, maintain a district-wide culture of respect, responsibility, and safety, increase consistent use of PBIS framework, and achieve 100% of schools implementing Tier 1 PBIS practices with fidelity. Because really, the idea is you, you get 100% at Tier 1, and then we enhance Tier 2, Tier 3. And so what we have is the Critical Response Committee that is in place this year, starting to evaluate behavior systems. It's also to evaluate attendance. This completely fits. We're gonna evaluate policy, evaluate the great things we are doing, but get alignment and get it standardized. And that's kind of the goals of that. So with our focus of improving student behavior outcomes, reduce office disciplinary referrals, as well as safe school and suspensions. This is arbitrary, but I put the goal, reduce by 20% over three years. Strengthen our Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports after we get 100% fidelity with the Tier 1. And Tier 1's for all students that we're trying to support. And then ensure all students, any additional behavior support, receive timely interventions. And really, this is the direction we're going in committee anyway. We should have fairly accurate data every year to review with the submission of those PBIS plans from schools.
So is there, I don't know if there's any specific questions within this so far?
So, so let's go back to your 88.1238, whatever.
Yep.
So do you have a state average? What is ours?
We're sitting about 93.
They're sitting around 93?
Yeah.
So depending on the year, it's 90, but we are below state average graduation rate.
Great goal for us, huh?
So that's our goal, which as I've written it.
About five points, four points, whatever you look at there.
Get, get it above 93% in your attendance. And I think we could do far better with graduation. And the beauty of our committee is we also are in an attendance cohort with the state. So they're advising us to, there's advertising, there's supports that they're providing to us, and we just need to be on board and move forward with them. But it should be quite helpful with that. And I think I have it on the next.
I don't know if the board is aware of this, but the, the governor also just recently, along with the state board, they, they're promoting attendance, because it's a statewide problem. It's not just a problem here. Following the pandemic, attendance really struggled, suffered everywhere in the state of Utah. So, so there is a, a state initiative to improve attendance. The good thing is, we jumped on the cohort probably six or eight months ago. And Jaime, does that sound about right?
When did, when did we enter the cohort?
March, so about, yeah.
So we're, so we're a little ahead of the game now, and, and got a good solid place on that cohort. There's likely to be more districts that'll, that'll want to jump on board. So we'll just work through it and learn what we can, and do our best to try to improve attendance. Another big focus of the state is potential legislation that will, will hit this next, this next legislative session, because things have gotten really laxed in the state of Utah as far as how the courts handle attendance, right? It used to be pretty strong in compulsory education, and now the, the position of legislature for the last several years has been, well, that's a function for the parents, parent's responsibility to get their kids to school. And so they backed way off, but since they have, attendance has gone pretty bad.
Yeah, our past principal said she had no way to sink teeth into any rules. Does this help in any way?
True, well, new legislation would help.
Would help. That's kind of what, because I mean, we, we've chatted a little bit about these statistics before. And, and she said, the challenge is, there's just no way to really sink your teeth into, to the attendance issues when they, they've allowed the parents to be the guardian of that.
I would hope that they would balance that with the fact that in the current climate, you could see homeschool rates go up if you push too hard the other way.
Sure.
And I think they'll be aware of that. I, I think the piece is awareness, advertising, support, rather than necessarily teeth with discipline, anything to that effect. So Superintendent mentioned, there is a big focus still, so we need to launch an attendance recovery plan. September is Attendance Awareness Month, and that is throughout the state. Maybe national, but I know it's throughout the state. And then graduation rates, we need to improve awareness of resources, supports, and accountability. So this, this really isn't trying to discipline or do anything punitive. It's trying to be supportive, and that's our goal.
I think even, like, the USBA, what they were asking for was more incentives and these to encourage and promote attendance rather than to be punitive. I think that's wise.
Absolutely, and we'll be aligned with that, the direction we're going. So really, restorative practices within discipline. We have some matrix we're, we're working on, and, and we've only met once, but there's, there's a lot we're going to be doing within that committee. And it's going to be ongoing, and that's a big piece. So not only can we continue to address these, we can continue anything else that comes up that requires a critical response. And what we have now, and we'll have this yearly, is, is a snapshot of data to say, you know, where we, where were we, where are we, where are we going? And I think that'd be a meaningful piece aligned with the committee.
I have a question. If you can go back to the data overview for 2022.
Here, you see?
Yeah, I didn't understand what the, what's the black number and what's the gray?
Oh, the gray number is state. I apologize for that.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so the really big number that's very concerning, that's statewide, sorry about that.
Thank you. And then I have another, one more question, I guess. So we talked about having a goal to reduce suspensions and, and things like that. I guess my question is, are we doing that in a way that doesn't just encourage us to not respond? To, like, we want to balance that with keeping the school safe and actually taking care of issues? We don't want to go so far to that direction that we're not addressing issues? What are, how are we...
I don't think we're turning a blind eye. I think we're doing it through support, supports of the students, supports of employees, the family, and then resources. So it's not, we're not trying to turn, turn an eye and say, don't suspend for that. Absolutely not at all. What we're trying to do is have restorative practices to help support educating the child, to minimize misbehaviors, as well as supporting everyone in the district to move forward with behavior management. So that's the idea. It's not to like, we are at this number, we need to get to here, make it happen. It's, we want to put the right things in place, the resources and supports that make that happen right from the bat. Anything else? Fantastic.
We're good, Ryan, thank you.
Board members, we'll, we'll get back with you with some solid statistics of what the graduation rates are in Utah and have been over the past few years, just to make sure we have a solid number on that, okay?
Pilot of Core 8, Leadership in Action, Kristy?
Did Shauna's job description say she had to be technical? Tech savvy.
Free screensaver, Kristy?
It's not free screen.
It is not free. There's a dude out there using a tree stand like that.
It's on green now. All right. This is just gonna be an overview of a pilot that we intend to use this year as district partners with our principals. We're all assigned out a partner, a principal to work with and to mentor, and to help walk them through, kind of, kind of how to make the, the principalship more effective and, and just be there. So one of the things that we decided to do with this Core 8 is it's systems-based. So I've just, I don't think I want to read this. I don't know, do you want me to read it as we go through it? Or do you just want to look at it? It's really based, go ahead. Okay, all right. So it's systems-based, which is different. So typically, what, what we operate off of are the Utah Educational Leadership Standards. Utah has standards for all educational leaders. And I think there are seven categories. Anyway, the standards tell you kind of, they give you indicators, like, things that we should be working on, but they're not super clear, and they're not really grounded in outcomes or indicators specifically. So what we're doing with this Core Systems is we've taken, and we've referenced the eight systems that we have with the Utah Educational Leadership Standards, and they are infused throughout these Core 8. And it's interesting, I put in here, it's not enough to simply know the Utah Educational Leadership Standards. Like, you know them, but what does it look like in practice? How do you apply those? And so what we've done with the Core 8 is make those more real. So I want to talk about why a systems approach is beneficial. The first one is it transforms standards into action through alignment with school-wide systems. And we've identified eight school-wide systems we want principals working toward to optimize how their schools are functioning. And so every, all of those standards are grounded in actual, real things that the, that the principals can implement. It helps focus the principal's efforts and professional, their own PGP, right? They write a PGP. They're gonna identify what systems are working well in their school, which ones aren't. And then they get to choose where they want to work on growth in their school. It also strengthens district partner support. So one of the things that I think is the most powerful part of this is it makes district partners more effective. We're working from a set of standards, a set of very clear expectations. And they're concrete, we can measure them, the principals can measure them, and we could provide support that way, and provide a lot of feedback based on the system structures. It also optimizes principal effectiveness. As a principal, there are a lot of competing interests. There are a lot of things that, you, you know, you're always questioning, where, where do I put my emphasis? And we read books like Leverage Leadership, and it tells us, focus on culture, focus on academic student performance. But the how of that is a little bit tricky. And so what we've done with our systems is we've, we've made that more visible and clear. So the Core Systems are, these are systems right here. Personal planning and leadership discipline, organized and intentional daily leadership. We believe that for a student to be, or for a principal to be effective in their school, they have to be effective in their personal planning and the discipline that, that leads their day. So we want to start there. If a principal's not organized, if they can't separate priorities, if they're not protecting time, if they're not able to get into classroom because they're just caught up in what we always call the whirlwind, they're not going to be effective. And so the first and, and most foundational part of this whole system is, make sure as a principal that you're well-planned, you're organized, and we can help you get there. And so we begin there. The second one, once you have everything together, as far as, oh, you're organized, you're planned, you need to share leadership with your school. There's not a single principal that can do everything on their own. Share leadership is critical, and getting the right leaders in place will transform your school faster than anything. So the second system of functioning, PL... than anything. So the second system of functioning, PLCs, and this is getting the right leaders, putting the right structures into place, and then helping those teams collabora- collaborate around student data to improve that school. The third one is the instructional framework and the GVC. So the, the classrooms are, they're where the rubber meets the road. Like, right, this is what we do every single day. And so we've got our instructional framework. It's a powerful piece that says, we're going to integrate instructional engagement and instructional strategies along with the, the GVC, these board-adopted curriculum or teacher-team-created curriculum. So we want to see both of those come together at a high level because that, boy, what happens every day in that classroom is really what translates into student learning. Data-driven school improvement. We want our principals to be able to dive into data, interpret data, analyze data, and use data for the end result, which is student learning and outcomes. And so what are the structures in their school? What is the data that they're using to drive what's happening in their schools?
Christie, I think you skipped number four.
Oh, did I? Oh, so, I did. Behavior and expectations. So this one, this one's interesting because if anyone ever says, you know, we're going to focus on culture, that's impossible at a school. Because culture doesn't come packaged in a silo, and if you fix this, everything else is fine. Every one of these systems works in concert with the other to bring the institutional culture together. So when we talk about behavior and expectations, and we're talking specifically here about student behavior, student expectations, how we're holding kids accountable, how are we celebrating when kids are meeting those marks? That, that is a huge part, but simply alone, it does not equate into school culture, right? Or student culture. So behavior and expectations, I, I always think of it this way, you know, if our, if our goal is student learning, what are the necessary conditions for student learning to take place? Well, number one, you have to have a safe school, and number two, you have to build connections with your kids. So we work from that behavior and expectation system point of view with that. All right. So then data-driven school improvement. Communication staff culture. Are you, are you being, with your staff at a level that they understand what's happening in the school, they're part of the community? Weekly emails, faculty meetings, are you communicating what needs to be shared? Staff culture is super powerful, and again, this is one where we, what we celebrate gets repeated, it gets reinforced. And so are we recognizing those bright spots in our, and encourage teachers to support each other that way? So communication staff culture is six. Seven, resource allocation and fiscal management. Can you manage your budgets? Can you allocate, can you build a great master schedule? Can you manage your, your FTEs in a way that you're optimizing student opportunities for learning and growth? And then the last one, and this one's interesting. I, I call this one the keystone because if you're, if you're doing Systems Two through Seven, but there's no accountability, systems will fall. So we have to have prevention for underperformance of staff. It's support and accountability. It's determining, why is there underperformance? Do they need, do they need more opportunity for growth? Do they need more professional development? Is this a can, is this a won't? What is this? Because at the end of the day, when we don't respond to underperformance, it hurts kids. So these eight systems combined create the institutional culture. And when you think about culture, it's really like, what we're saying is, how are things done around here? And I, I think one of the really good, kind of like litmus tests for what is the culture is if a teacher can kind of predict what the, an answer is going to be from the, from the principal, right? Like, if I ask him, I know they're going to say, well, what about, you know, culture is, is, it's kind of this constellation of things coming together that, that create what is happening in the school. And every one of these systems contributes to building a culture. One of the things that I recently read was that accountability for underperformance, when you think about that one, they say nothing destroys morale faster in an institution or an organization than when, when underperforming staff members, when there's nothing done, when there's no, when there's no response. It, people lose their, their drive, their passion, their motivation, why am I working so hard? So, I mean, you think about, all of these come together, and, and you take one out, your institutional culture isn't going to be as strong. There'll be pieces missing. All right. So this Core Eight, it's got a lot of pieces to it, and this is just an overview, so I don't want to get in too deep. But what we just looked at were the Core Eight systems that we are going to provide to the principals indicators and outcomes. What does it look like when you're doing this well? And then what are the outcomes when you're doing this well? The next step is for the principals to complete their self-assessment and create a PGP. They're going to look through, and, and we've got a document to help guide them through how to reflect on the Core Eight. After they assess the systems in their school and determine where they maybe need to do some work and what they want to work on, motivation's a huge part of that, where do you want to put your energy? They'll create a PGP, their district partner, they'll share that with us, we'll help them, and we'll work toward that. And a PGP doesn't have to be something that they do at the beginning of the year and only do at the end. I mean, if they want three PGPs throughout the year, let's go, you know? Let's, let's build these systems, let's get these moving because, you know, the more focused and, and better running we can get these systems, the better. If they want to work on a portion of a system at a time, you know, it's a lot. So their district partner will help them work through the PGP. So district partner support throughout the year, we have monthly check-ins, those are formal, but we have ongoing check-ins throughout the year to make sure that our partners feel supported, that we're available, and that we're giving the guidance necessary. At the end of the year, the principals will do an end-of-year reflection, and they'll reflect on how they did in implementing the, the system or the piece of the system that, that they chose as their PGP. They'll analyze, they'll, they'll kind of self-evaluate, how did I do? How's the system going? And then they'll share that with their district partner. The district partner will then create a summary evaluation statement, and that will be an overview of, of how, how they did, feedback on the system, blows, grows, and where to go next. Right? Assistant principals will also do the Core Eight, but theirs is through a different lens. Theirs is through the lens of how prepared are you to support the principal in these systems? So we also want them to focus, if you look up there, it says focus systems, there are three focus systems foundational that, that the assistants really need to be supporting and bolstering the principal in, and those are personal planning, we got to make sure they're planned out, instructional framework, and GVC, and behavior expectations. We know assistant principals carry a lot of the load for those behavior challenges that we have in our schools, and so we want them to be very prepared to support the principal in helping with that. The assistant principals will choose a, a PGP, and they'll work with that, with their principal through that, and at the end of the year, the principal will provide a summary evaluation of the assistant. So you had a glance, I, it, I think it's super helpful to know where are we going from here? So we showed this in district leadership. The principals are aware that on September twenty-third, we'll share this self-assessment information, they'll start their PGP, and then we'll, the year will begin, and we'll start going forward with this Core Eight system. We've got an implementation timeline. I've set up a steering committee, and every member is happy to serve, so we'll be doing that. Today's eight thirteen, we're working on the presentation to you here tonight. And then we'll go ahead with our steering committee, and they'll look over it. But there's a process here, we've got a plan in place. We know that there will be lots of input, changes, improvements, but for now, we're starting with, with a, a pretty strong and well-developed sys- like a plan, and then, and then we'll go from there. So, do you have any questions?
How, how do you choose the partners, the district director partner? Their experience?
Yeah, yeah. So experience, background, where, where we are strong, you know, where can we provide, and, and look at the nee- the needs of the principals, too. Like, who best meets that need? And we, we went through a process, we had lots of conversations about this. We're trying to be strategic in supporting our principals because, you know, they deserve the very best support we can give, and so we're, we're very intentional about how that happens.
Other questions?
I, I think this is amazing. In business, I work with this all the time, and just your key points, you know, what people expect, where you're going, your behavioral, you know, shared leadership, right people in the right places, like, all that stuff. It's, this is powerful, and I think it go, I'm really impressed, so congrats.
Thank you, thank you.
Board members, when I did my dissertation, it's been several years ago, but I, I actually pulled the principal evaluation systems from every district in the state of Wyoming, and I studied them, and I looked how, specifically how, how they linked back to the standards. But I got, I got my eyes on a lot of different systems, particularly on the canned systems that are out there. But I will tell you, th- this is, I, I was so excited when Christie, I mean, she, I didn't ask her to do this, right? We knew this was coming. Once we got the teacher evaluation system finalized, and, and she, she took it upon herself to get started on this framework, and she, she threw out the rough draft on my desk, and, and immediately, like, it, it just spoke to me, th- this idea that we're, we're, we're not necessarily rating directly on the standard, but we're tying the standard to these systems. Systems are a real-world application. It's what we do. It's not what we think we're good at, right? Or it's not even about our dispositions as much, but it's, it's what systems we have in place to drive not just the culture, but the effectiveness of our school as an organization. I think it's innovative. I, I'm, I'm, I just, I, I can't say enough about it. I, I think this is the, a direction, it's, I haven't seen a system like this, but I think it's going to make us better, and it's going to really give principals more direction on what those systems are and what they should look like, while still giving them some autonomy to define, you know, this is a framework, right? So systems might look a little bit different, and they'll share ideas, and, and principals will innovate, but I, I love the fact that, that we're now, we now have a, a language for leadership in our school district. So wanted to thank Christie for that.
Good way to say that. Thank you.
And real quick, while I've got the mic, the second one, which is PLCs, is going to be our district focus for the upcoming school year. And if you come to Opening Institute, you'll see a presentation on that that will align with that system.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
This is just clarification. I misspoke. I apologize for any undue concern. The goal of the cohort is to increase by five percent, which is ninety-three percent graduation rate. We are right at state average eighty-eight point eight graduation right now. So apologies.
That's even better.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Not great, but better.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, time for committee, committee reports. Anybody dying to kick off?
No, I'm dying to find out what happened to my notes. So, so you sent them to us. They were in here earlier, now I can't find them.
Do you have them? Do you still have them?
The new system is just, it's going to be whipping me. You don't need to send them back to me. I, they were just in here.
Okay, while them guys are searching, I'm going to run off memory. And so my committee report for facilities. Secure vegetables, they was going to try to have them done before, throughout the district before school started. They still on track, Troy?
Pretty much. There's a few minor punch lists, things that there, we've got some delays on, a few windows that had like a four-week lead time, that kind of thing, but for the most part, they were scrambling around. I, I was over to Ashley this morning, and it was, they were, they were hustling to get things done over there, so I'm, I'm pleased to see that they're working on those punch lists.
Good. So we've talked about that, seems like forever, so pretty soon, I believe that will be wrapped up and, and behind us. The, the blue buildings behind the UNA Middle School has been put on the auction website, I believe it was yesterday.
They were there, today.
Today?
Yeah.
And so they are, they are out there, and they're up for bid. If you know anybody that has been waiting for that or is interested, we've been trying for a long time to get that situated so that we could get them buildings tore down and, and out of there. So that's up and going. The bid has been awarded for the old district office parking lot. I appreciate everybody that works on it. The bids come back in quite a bit more than what we thought they was going to. So they've re-engineered and reconstructed and, and haggled with the, with the most bidding contractor, and they've been really good to, to work with Troy and them to get that down to a more reasonable price so that we could accomplish that. A lot of it was unnecessary. Where they'd engineered the pond to go to, to collect the rainwater, runoff water, and that happened to be the highest spot in the parking lot. So we changed that, so we wasn't moving a bunch of dirt. There was a, a power pole that was going to move that was seventy thousand dollars, sixty-five or seventy-five.
Yeah.
One of the two. And it's not really necessary for that to happen, so we're not going to do that. And some sidewalk curving that the engineers called to be replaced, it's already there, and it's in good shape, what's already there, so we're going to leave it and not spend money tearing it out and replace, and replacing it. So that proj- that project will, will be kicking off soon. And so we're excited about that. Been lots of things done this summer and completed, but there are little paving, patching jobs that have taken place at the, the major school bus driveway and different places. Lots of work all over the district, but that is the main things that are happening on facilities right now. And so, did I miss anything?
I think you nailed it. We, I have, have to really hand it to our maintenance team for kind of coordinating. We, we've done half a roof at UNA High School. We have replaced two HVAC control systems at two different elementary schools, replaced the turf fields at UNA, in the stadium and in the UTC that were long overdue. Just a lot of really big projects that have been executed, and we're, we're, we're ready to roll for the new school year with this stuff.
One thing that you guys might be questioning, the, been a work in progress for a, a year, and it, and it will continue to be for a while, our white fleet. If you've looked on the website, we have some cars that's up for auction now. We're trying to fix things in the district so that we don't have so many cars sitting around, getting old, that we're maintaining and taking care of. And when we get rid of them, they're really not worth a whole lot. And so we're shrinking the size of our white fleet by some. I think we will continue to shrink that by, by some as we determine needs and the different ways to work things. And then where the district can buy cars so much cheaper than you or I, if we go to the dealership and buy one. If we buy a car and keep it for a short time and resell it, our expense for owning that car, for one, it's going to be under warranty, it's not going to need batteries and, and them things that happen after you own them for five or ten years. And so we're going to keep a younger fleet of cars, and we believe that that will drop our expenses and then also give somebody that needs one in the district something much better for traveling and more reliable and that. So if any of you has been wondering what, and we started this quite a wa- quite a while ago, and Troy's worked on it, him and his team in the transportation department, a bunch more this year. I think we will continue to work on that so that we don't just have cars sitting in parking lots, getting old, and the value's up and down.
And President, just to mention, one way we're doing that is we're pooling vehicles, right? So instead of a vehicle being assigned necessarily to, to one employee, or maybe two employees, we're, we're pooling vehicles so that if, there could be a group of seven or eight different employees that are using one vehicle. And, and so we're just more efficient that way.
Yeah. So I think with that, that's my committee report. So, I think with that, that's my committee report on facilities. Let's just go down the line. Tonya?
After all of that, after all of that, and Shawna helped us and we got into all our notes, we've already gone over all the policies and there's nothing else in the notes that we haven't gone over. So, I don't really have anything to add to the policy committee. We've gone over.
That doesn't mean you're not doing your job, Tonya. It just means that your job gets really scrutinized every month as we go over it line by line. So, cool. Robin?
Okay, so UB Tech, I serve on the Board of Trustees. Lots going on, fall schedules out, August 28th in Vernal, 10:15 to 1:00 p.m., welcome wellness walkthrough. So, I'm just going to give you information. The golf tournament for scholarships, September 19th in Roosevelt. It's a great, it's their best fundraiser and it's great. It goes directly to the students. If you've gone by, you see that they've put up a lot of poles out in the, their yard there. They're working on the high voltage program, so that's pretty cool. They do a great job. Skills USA Nationals in Atlanta, they, they did awesome. They had 24 students placed in the top 10 nationally. That's amazing. Nine medalists, one gold, four silver, four bronze. And I was coming in 2026, they're going to start an L-Tech program on the Verne campus. So, that's cool. That's great for students and adult students as well. UNA Schools Foundation, dedicated group of individuals helping our educators with grants. They're awesome. Bernie's here. Bernie's, they've had a little bit of change, so they retired, Bernie is retiring from her duties there and Lori Gilman has moved, so they've added a few people. Matt and Savannah Shaw, Jenica Donaldson and Amber Headlock came on last year as well. They're going to tweak their award, their grant award process. They're going to award to the classroom instead of just the teacher. So, if the teacher, so if the classroom needs, it's like a, whatever, an overhead or whatever that they ask for the grant, that's going to stay if the teacher moves. It's going to stay in the classroom. Is that right, Bernie? Did I understand that correctly? Okay, anyway. And last thing, two, two more things. December 8th is their big concert. That's their big fundraiser that generates a lot of revenue for scholarship, for their grants. And then Shannon Dietz just wanted to say she's excited for the new year. They appreciate our board's support and they're having a opening social tomorrow night. USBA, so I say, did you all get my email? All right. I hope, you don't have to read all the notes, but I just, hopefully the top, you get the, so Flaming Gorge Lodge for our fall, USBA meeting is September 16th. And hope we can all go because that'd be great to have Daggett so close. And then.
Robin, can I interrupt you and ask you a question about that? Who's reserving that so that we can?
Soup already did it. Soup and, and, I'm having, Richard stole, took care of that, but that was, yeah, and I think Soup, you're, you're facilitating, right? The group discussion or?
No, I really don't know, but I'm willing to.
Okay. I'll check. I can check with all the board presidents, so what do they want to do? And then just remember, I know this leadership conference in Bryce Canyon, this is one of the best professional development things that USBA does. I know it's a long way away, but Jeff Lysick is going to do one of our, I'm on this committee this year, so we do our work through committees as well. But they, Jeff is famous, like Linda Hanks from Jewab is just like, we have to have Jeff Lysick there. So, he's doing two breakouts Friday afternoon and it's cutting negative narratives off for school board members. So, I think he'll be amazing. And then one thing I just wanted to bring up, and Soup, you might have more information on this, but we really, I didn't put this in the email, but I'm going to again. We really need to look at Senate Bill 37 that's coming back. And that's the one where they want to take the, your property tax and put it, this is into the general, I don't know, the general fund at the state level and then they divvy it out and just, they're, they may make it veto proof, like this governor vetoed it this year. It's something we need to really talk to our legislators about and we need to understand it. And it's going to come back because it's Stuart Adams' baby, so, and Mike Schultz, they just, I, I just think.
Maybe if they do that, we won't have to do judgment levies anymore.
Yeah, that'd be great, but they're not, so have just why it's controversial, again, it's taxpayers expect property taxes to fund local schools and this really would take out, critics described the bill of money laundering for, for education funds. I just think we need to get ahead of it. That's what Lexi Cunningham is actually, she's our person, your lobbyist for US, for USSA and USBA and she just says, we need to really think about it, talk to your legislators before they go ahead. So, anyway, that's just something, please be aware, look, because it's going to come back, SB 37. And you probably know more about that Soup than, but anyway.
Explained a lot.
Okay, so you guys that are, have an end with our winter 10 and two, let's get to them before September.
Speaking of that, we haven't, have we planned a time for a lunch or anything with them?
And September is legislative month.
We did that last year, right? Or the year before?
That's part of the purpose of us getting together at Flaming Gorge Lodge.
We were going to invite them.
Well, not to that, but to organize something so we, we, we have all of the legislators together with all three school districts. So, it's not just us, we would do it collectively. So, we're going to actually plan that out while we're at Flaming Gorge Lodge.
That makes sense, great.
That's it for mine.
Thank you, Ellen.
It came? Did, when did it come?
It came like a week and a half ago.
Oh, I was looking at my meeting, I'm like, hey, we got this. Oh, this is, this is awesome. I have the certificate, I'll stick it. So, this shows for our professional development for USBA, it's called a master board certification, that we finally all did it, did it all, that we all did it. So, last year, 2024, so 2025 is coming up.
She's been hounding on me for four years.
I know. Awesome. I'll bring you the certificate.
Looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tonya, you're up.
Harley, thank you for the notes. It's awesome to have the notes, because that way I'm not trying to take notes in the meeting as well. And so, appreciate your efforts there. Troy and Rodrigo talked a little bit about our committee forum, or the, the signing authority changes, and we've talked a little bit about that at the high school. I think that's, that's going to be challenging for some coaches. We, we found out, I'm sure, this morning as they met, that the reality is, I think it makes it a little bit safer for us. And it consolidates kind of where that money's coming from and going to. Also, I participated in our golf tournament. We talked a little bit about transactions, additional transactions. There, in fundraisers, there's always cash that changes hands, but then most seems to be a little bit more challenging and we talked a little bit about that. I was a little nervous because that's kind of a two-way transaction. And so, we really don't know where it goes. So, they're going to look into that a little bit deeper and kind of give us some, some thoughts on, on what, what options are available to help take money. Most people don't carry cash anymore. And so, so a one-way transaction is much better than a two-way transaction. So, if we can come up with something. So, judgment levy, we talked about, we'll talk more about and we'll approve that or try to approve that tonight. We, we have already talked a little bit about the fact that we'll be going over the FY26 financial, the original budget based on approving that original budget as well again. So, and purchases over 50K, there's a number of them tonight we'll cover. And, and so, that's good. We talked a little bit about year-end budget updates with our trust lands and TSSA, some surplus and that surplus, I didn't know how they changed this, but that surplus is evenly divided again amongst the schools. And so, and then they have that additional money to work with. So, so it's, it is still a use it or lose it type thing, but use it and then the rest of them get to help you spend it if you didn't spend yours. So, principals make sure that, that you're trying to spend that as, as close to zero as you possibly can. Not that it's nice, it is nice of you to give to the others, but I would much sooner see you use it where it is approved, so. And I believe, we, we talked a little bit about, we're going to talk about it tonight, so I don't know if I want to share it, but some of you, we, we've seen some, I think, outstanding improvement. Tonight, we'll celebrate something even more outstanding in some ways, especially when we look at our student achievements as far as their test scores and where we've come from our below state average to average to above state average in almost every testing area and almost every school. And so, those are awesome things. And we as a board, maybe Dave and I talked a little bit about ways that we can actually go to a school as boards and board members and, and actually celebrate with you in some ways. So, if you've got an idea that you'd like us to participate in, I think we'd be more than happy to. So, that was kind of where we went with ours.
Thank you. Denise?
All right, you ready for this? We didn't have a risk committee this month.
Quarterly.
Yeah, it's quarterly, so, and Tonya already covered policy, so I don't have anything.
Thank you. Board members, that brings us to the end of our work session. So, I would entertain a motion to close our work session.
We don't want to go into board, or?
We advertised it on the agenda down at the bottom, so we can't, we're thinking we probably better stick with.
All right, no problem. I'll make a motion to close our work session.
Does the motion, we have a second?
All second.
Denise seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting closed. Passing unanimous. We'll start our business meeting promptly at 6:00.
We do have some food. Shawna, we have food, right, for board members?
Yep.
In the fridge?
Okay.
The time is 5:20 p.m.
Also for administrators, right?
Well, I was ready to go.
Welcome. Welcome to the UNO School District Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is August 13th, 2025. The meeting is being held at the UNO District School District Office located at 826 South 1500 East, Naples, Utah. Present at this meeting, Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robyn McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford and myself, Troy Timothy Business Administrator. The time is 6:03 PM.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here. They, um, we got a couple of birthdays in the district office that I heard about. Shaleen Calder and Karen Harvey both turned 69. They're getting old.
I'm not sure about those facts.
I should always be fact-checked. Um, I know for a fact that's a lie, but they're really close to 69. Our reverence tonight will be by Board Member Todd Massey and our pledge by Rob McClellan, Board Member.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity which we have to be here tonight. We're grateful for the facilities we have to meet in, for the opportunity we have to, uh, to be a part of this program and to be a part of helping educate the students in the basin. We're grateful for our district, our district employees and for all they do, uh, those who, uh, work with our children and diligently and faithfully put forth the effort that it takes to help them increase and gain knowledge and prepare themselves for life. We're grateful again for this opportunity we have to meet and discuss matters at hand this evening. We pray that we'll do so with open minds, that we may be mindful of, uh, our constituents as well as those that we serve. We're grateful again for all that does for us, lead us and guide us, and walk beside us. We humbly pray always in the name of Jesus Christ to them.
Please stand and follow our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, you guys, for your help. Um, school report. Superintendent, I'm gonna let you introduce Principal Brown and kick us off. Is that okay?
Yeah, you bet. So, uh, so Principal Aaron Brown is going to give us a report on preschool, on the, uh, now, now it's called Central Cove Early Learning Center. So, uh, we'll turn the time over to her.
Okay. For Central Cove, this year has been a bridge between who we've been and who we're becoming. Our move to the new building isn't just about stepping into a beautiful space, though we are deeply grateful for its beauty. It's about opening new doors of opportunity for our students, families and staff. Tonight, I would like to reaffirm our commitment to the clear and purposeful why behind this beautiful transformation. Every step in this transition has been grounded in our mission to play with purpose and kindness as we learn with friends and families. It's guided by our values of collaboration, inclusivity and respect. This building equips us with new tools and greater capacity to live out those values bigger, better and together. Too many children in our district start kindergarten with skills well below the state average. That's not a reflection on the skill or dedication of our teachers or of our families. It simply means we need to start supporting earlier intentionally and together. High-quality preschool builds on the learning that begins at home, adding intentional developmentally-rich experiences, language-filled play, problem-solving with friends and early literacy and math instruction. These opportunities build confidence, strengthen skills and prepare children to thrive in the classrooms of UNO School District's talented teachers. And when our students start stronger, our whole community benefits. One of the most exciting parts of this transformation is how it expands our reach. More classrooms, more students and more instructional time mean we can serve our community in bigger and better ways than ever before. Last year, we operated in up to seven classrooms, running 29 total sessions each week. That meant our three-year-olds attended about one hour and 15 minutes per week. Our four-year-olds had three, had three hours with us and our pre-K students were with us six hours and 15 minutes per week. Over an entire year, that added up to just 45 hours for three-year-olds, 108 hours for four-year-olds and 225 hours for pre-K. This year, we're able to expand to 10 classrooms with 26 sessions each week. And the biggest change is in instructional time. Our three-year-olds will now attend three hours per week. Four-year-olds will have six hours per week and our pre-K students will be here with us nine hours per week. Over the year, that's 240. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys, for your help. Um, school report. Superintendent, I'm gonna let you introduce Principal Brown and kick us off. Is that okay?
Yeah, you bet. So, uh, so Principal Aaron Brown is going to give us a report on preschool, on the, uh, now, now it's called Central Cove Early Learning Center. So, uh, we'll turn the time over to her.
Okay. For Central Cove, this year has been a bridge between who we've been and who we're becoming. Our move to the new building isn't just about stepping into a beautiful space, though we are deeply grateful for its beauty. It's about opening new doors of opportunity for our students, families and staff. Tonight, I would like to reaffirm our commitment to the clear and purposeful why behind this beautiful transformation. Every step in this transition has been grounded in our mission to play with purpose and kindness as we learn with friends and families. It's guided by our values of collaboration, inclusivity and respect. This building equips us with new tools and greater capacity to live out those values bigger, better and together. Too many children in our district start kindergarten with skills well below the state average. That's not a reflection on the skill or dedication of our teachers or of our families. It simply means we need to start supporting earlier intentionally and together. High-quality preschool builds on the learning that begins at home, adding intentional developmentally-rich experiences, language-filled play, problem-solving with friends and early literacy and math instruction. These opportunities build confidence, strengthen skills and prepare children to thrive in the classrooms of UNO School District's talented teachers. And when our students start stronger, our whole community benefits. One of the most exciting parts of this transformation is how it expands our reach. More classrooms, more students and more instructional time mean we can serve our community in bigger and better ways than ever before. Last year, we operated in up to seven classrooms, running 29 total sessions each week. That meant our three-year-olds attended about one hour and 15 minutes per week. Our four-year-olds had three, had three hours with us and our pre-K students were with us six hours and 15 minutes per week. Over an entire year, that added up to just 45 hours for three-year-olds, 108 hours for four-year-olds and 225 hours for pre-K. This year, we're able to expand to 10 classrooms with 26 sessions each week. And the biggest change is in instructional time. Our three-year-olds will now attend three hours per week. Four-year-olds will have six hours per week and our pre-K students will be here with us nine hours per week. Over the year, that's 240.
Welcome, welcome to the UNO School District or Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The meeting is being held at the UNO District School District Office located at eight twenty-six South, fifteen hundred East, Naples, Utah. Present at this meeting, Board President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford and myself, Troy Timothy Business Administrator. The time is six oh three P M.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here. They, um, we got a couple of birthdays in the district office that I heard about. Shaleen Calder and Karen Harvey both turned sixty-nine. They're getting old. I should always be fact-checked. I know for a fact that's a lie, but they're really close to sixty-nine. Our reverence tonight will be by Board Member Todd Massey and our pledge by Rob McClellan, Board Member.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity which we have to be here tonight. We're grateful for the facilities we have to meet in, for the opportunity we have to, to be a part of this program and to be a part of helping educate the students in the basin. We're grateful for our district, our district employees and for all they do. Those who work with our children diligently and faithfully put forth the effort that it takes to help them increase and gain knowledge and prepare themselves for life. We're grateful again for this opportunity we have to meet and discuss matters at hand this evening. We pray that we'll do so with open minds, that we may be mindful of our constituents as well as those that we serve. We're grateful again for all that does for us, lead us and guide us, want beside us. We humbly pray always in the name of Jesus Christ to them.
Please stand upon your pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks you guys for your help. Um, school report. Superintendent, I'm gonna let you introduce Principal Brown and kick us off. Is that okay?
Yeah, you bet. So, uh, so Principal Erin Brown is going to give us a report on preschool on the, now, now it's called Central Cove Early Learning Center. So, uh, we'll turn the time over to her.
Okay. For Central Cove, this year has been a bridge between who we've been and who we're becoming. Our move to the new building isn't just about stepping into a beautiful space, though we are deeply grateful for its beauty. It's about opening new doors of opportunity for our students, families and staff. Tonight, I would like to reaffirm our commitment to the clear and purposeful why behind this beautiful transformation. Every step in this transition has been grounded in our mission to play with purpose and kindness as we learn with friends and families. It's guided by our values of collaboration, inclusivity and respect. This building equips us with new tools and greater capacity to live out those values bigger, better and together. Too many children in our district start kindergarten with skills well below the state average. That's not a reflection on the skill or dedication of our teachers or of our families. It simply means we need to start supporting earlier intentionally and together. High-quality preschool builds on the learning that begins at home, adding intentional developmentally-rich experiences, language-filled play, problem-solving with friends and early literacy and math instruction. These opportunities build confidence, strengthen skills and prepare children to thrive in the classrooms of UNO School District's talented teachers. And when our students start stronger, our whole community benefits. One of the most exciting parts of this transformation is how it expands our reach. More classrooms, more students and more instructional time mean we can serve our community in bigger and better ways than ever before. Last year, we operated in up to seven classrooms, running twenty-nine total sessions each week. That meant our three-year-olds attended about one hour and fifteen minutes per week. Our four-year-olds had three, had three hours with us and our pre-K students were with us six hours and fifteen minutes per week. Over an entire year, that added up to just forty-five hours for three-year-olds, a hundred and eight hours for four-year-olds and two hundred and twenty-five hours for pre-K. This year, we're able to expand to ten classrooms with twenty-six sessions each week. And the biggest change is in instructional time. Our three-year-olds will now attend three hours per week. Four-year-olds will have six hours per week and our pre-K students will be here with us nine hours per week. Over the year, that's two hundred and forty percent of the previous time for three-year-olds, two hundred percent for four-year-olds and a hundred and forty-four percent for pre-K. These numbers aren't just statistics. They represent more children gaining access to higher-quality preschool experiences that lay a stronger foundation for kindergarten and beyond. You'll also notice a shift in our student makeup. We're able to welcome more typically-developing peers while continuing to serve a strong percentage of students with identified needs. This balance strengthens our inclusive model, creating more opportunities for peer learning, modeling and friendships that benefit every child. It also means we can better distribute support needs across classrooms with intentionality. With our expanded space, no single class carries an overly-concentrated level of high need. This allows teachers to provide more focused, individualized support while students experience richer peer interactions and more opportunities to learn from one another. In short, we'll be able to reach more children for more time with a rich, richer balance of peers and instruction, creating, creating stronger learning, stronger relationships and stronger support for every student. As an inclusive developmental preschool, we bring learners of all abilities together, supporting one another and meeting each child at their own level. This kind of meaningful inclusion and developmentally-targeted instruction doesn't happen by chance. It's the result of careful, deliberate design. One of the most intentional elements of this design is the designation of adult and student-focused space. Creation of our collaborative team space, a daily reminder, a daily physical reminder that when we work together, our kids benefit, facilitates a stronger, more data-driven collaboration process. Here, a P L C can become less something we do and more something we are. It's where teachers brainstorm, plan, analyze data and support each other in real time, turning shared insight into intentional action for the students, families and community we serve. We've also moved adult desks out of classrooms in order to reflect our commitment to student-centered spaces. Classrooms are for kids, places where we can be fully present with them, engaged in their learning and their experiences. Our team space is where we collaborate for them. This thoughtful separation keeps our priorities clear, protects instructional time and ensures that classroom moments remain, remain focused, enriching and entirely about the students. The design of our new building adds even more innovative space, bringing a new level of high-value, student-centered features that directly translates into more and higher-quality learning time. When a student needs to reset, the sensory rooms provide a quick and effective way to do it, often in just a few minutes instead of losing half a lesson. This means more time actively engaged in learning and fewer disruptions for the, for the entire class. Over time, students don't just regulate in the moment, they learn what strategies and tools help them succeed. They begin to seek out those supports and advocate for their needs, building independence and self-regulation skills that carry over into every learning environment. Our playgrounds are more than just places for recess, they are vibrant learning environments. Every day, in every kind of weather, children build language, cooperation and confidence through play. They solve problems together, take healthy risks, try new things and practice including one another, all while having fun and developing motor and communication skills. When children build a bridge, plant a seed or bake a snack, they're learning math, science and language, often without even realizing it. In our Maker Space and Kid Kitchen, these immersive, hands-on inquiry-based experiences spark curiosity, foster problem-solving and encourage collaboration. As they plan, create and celebrate their projects, children are building skills that they will carry for life. These spaces aren't add-ons, they're engines driving language, problem-solving, physical development and independence. Expanding our reach isn't just about serving more children, it's also about building the expertise to serve them well. Our partnership with Utah State University connects us to cutting-edge research and best practices in early childhood and special education while also investing in the next generation of professionals in these fields. U S U Partners will be integral members of our school improvement team, adding their voices as advocates who deeply understand early childhood learning and special education. This collaboration brings together the strengths of in-district experts, the insights and expertise of researchers and the invaluable hands-on experience of our staff, who are experts regarding our children, our families and our community. This partnership also strengthens our ability to grow our own, developing skilled, committed professionals who are deeply invested in our community. Through systematic school improvement, targeted training and professional development, we are building a sustainable pipeline of educators ready to serve our students now and into the future. We've already been doing incredible work for the children in our community. The new building doesn't make us world-class on its own. What happens inside and what will happen inside as we continue to improve also matters tremendously. What this space does so well by design is to remove barriers and give our people, our programs and our structures the room and flexibility to operate at their highest potential. It's a catalyst that will help take what is already great and elevate it further. The innovation and beauty of the building challenge us, as the people inside, to rise to the occasion, ensuring that every interaction, program and support inside reflects the world-class education our children deserve. Each student we reach represents an individual opportunity for growth and achievement. The student who once spoke only a few unintelligible syllables now has a voice, sharing thoughts and feelings with friends, teachers and family. The student who, the student who struggled with sensory overload has learned to regulate their body and mind, turning frustration into focus. The family who once felt uncertain has found confidence and reassurance in their home and school partnership. The child who clung tightly to a caregiver at separation now greets classmates at the door, helping them feel welcome. These are stories of growth and achievement that happen at Central Cove every day and will continue, one student, one family, one story at a time. They show the potential for every child to thrive in an environment with the right resources and support. Our children must leave Central Cove, ready for engaged learning in and out of the classroom and prepared to build meaningful, healthy relationships. Our new home, combined with the intentional collaborative efforts of our staff, will expand our capacity to provide tailored support to every child, ensuring, ensuring they leave ready to learn and ready to succeed. In closing, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support and belief in our mission. Your investment in our students, our staff and our community makes this transformation possible. Together, we are not only opening the doors to a beautiful new building, we are opening doors to greater opportunities, stronger relationships and brighter futures for every child we serve. So, thank you.
Don't leave us yet. So, enrollment numbers, are we starting to see a change? You just know me, don't you?
And it's, it's, if I can get it to open the right thing. So, we are starting to see a change. Um, last year at this time, we had, well, I don't have the numbers at this time, but by the time I had numbers, the end of September, we had two hundred and one students enrolled. Right now, we have two hundred and thirty-eight, so there's been an increase. We wouldn't have had two hundred and one at the end of August last year. We're still in the middle of enrollment. Um, as far as a division or as far as a balance of our typically-developing and our special education students, we currently have a hundred and thirty-five who qualify for I E Ps out of that two hundred and thirty-eight. So, it's still not fifty-fifty, but it's much, much closer than it was. Last year, capacity, and I don't, so we have our foundations program that's just our three-year-olds. And that is such a fluid program, I don't know exactly how to figure that into our capacity number. We've kind of weave them in where we need to. So, capacity for our four-year-old and our pre-K programs are static, staple programs. Last year, capacity would have been two hundred and sixty students and we were at two hundred and sixty-two. So, we, we were full, full, full. This year, capacity would be three hundred and fifty, sorry, that's with the, that's with the maybe foundations, three hundred and twelve. So, we've increased capacity, but then we're at three, sorry, we're at two hundred and thirty-eight. So, we still have some capacity there. I, like I said, we're still in the middle of enrollment and we're still getting phone calls and we still have an open house and...
Yeah, I was gonna say, the open house should...
I think so.
I assume the price is hard to beat this year, so...
Enrollment tuition has not gone up at all and we do still have our tuition assistance program that we started last year. So, if families qualify financially, very similar to the free and reduced bunch, then there is no tuition for those families and there's no tuition for students who qualify on an I A P, who need an I A P, so...
That's awesome. Thank you.
It's a great, it's a great value.
Yeah, I, I bet you're really close to that fifty percent or better.
We are, we are getting pretty close because right now, as enrollment is increasing, we're obviously not, we, we get, I think we've had two move-ins this week that have I E Ps. But, other than that, the encol, the enrollment increase that's happening right now is our typically-developing peers.
Makes sense.
Other questions?
What can we do to help get that enrollment there?
Um, I think just continue supporting as you have, so I appreciate that. There still are some longstanding misconceptions and just misunderstandings in the community about who we are and what we do. I still will have people say, "Well, I thought you could only have students who were on an I A P" or...
I've had those same comments.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a big thing. So, just as we, as we get that word out. And I think we've been trying to make, we want our families, especially our families that may be struggling to afford early childhood education in, in any way. We want them to be aware of that tuition assistance program as well.
Yes, statistics show that it's definitely a value for us as, as we look onward in school for those, for those kids.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Robin?
Just two quick things. I, I love the logo, so, however, yeah, however you guys work all that out and then... I just want to acknowledge, because Dave and I came on, what, six years ago-ish, Dave and, and the board at that time, and I know it was Randy Epton, I just want to acknowledge their philosophy of, they were building fund balance, I don't know if that's the philosophy, but having a saving so you could do cash and a lot, a lot of districts do that, but I, we are the beneficiaries of actually that philosophy that they were bringing in that capital and, and then they had a little extra. And I want to acknowledge the work that they did that really has benefited us to be able to do that with, and now we've spent down, I mean, now our deficit's been, but, different philosophy, different board, which is great too. I'm, different boards do differently. So, anyway, just want to acknowledge the people before us that let us have the, the opportunity to provide such an amazing world-class facility. I'm so excited. Early childhood learning is so, 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 so important. I think we're gonna change lives forever, so it's exciting. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
I am obviously really excited about this. I think we were talking about getting the enrollment up. I think an easy way to do that would be to bus kids from the west side that don't have that opportunity to participate. That would be something I would put a plug in for. I don't know what we need to do to make that happen, but there's a lot of need there on that side of our county and they're part of this school district too, and I'd like to see them have the opportunity to be a part.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Tanya. We, we certainly need to look into that. And it's something we can do, it's just a matter of, you know, if that's what we want to do, we, we just have to do it. So, we'll look into that. Yeah, I, I just want to tell the board, we've already had two meetings with Utah State faculty involved. And it, it's so refreshing to sit around a table. I'm not an early childhood specialist. I was a special education teacher, but the methodologies are actually quite different. And to, to have people with, with deep expertise who understand the research that, that can, I'll, I'll tell you, in, in some ways validate what, what Erin's already doing in, in her leadership, but also to help us to become even better with some of those methodologies. I, I think the sky's the limit. It's, we, we have, we have the, the perfect setup right now. When, when I use the word, the term world-class, I really mean that, like, we, we can be as good as anybody at early childhood education. And, and I believe we're gonna get there with the partnership, with, with the staff that we have and now the new facility. So, this is a real exciting time and I'm telling you, I can't wait to see the looks on those little kiddos' faces when they walk in for the first time and get to see that new facility. I really believe, you know, a lot of kids, particularly young preschool kids, there's a little anxiety there when they have to leave mom or dad for the first time. And I, I believe that, that the, the energy and the excitement of the new building is going to help alleviate some of that for those kids, which is really a good thing.
Thank you.
Super excited about the blue school. He can't, almost every day and he's like, "That's my new school," so I'm excited.
We're excited to welcome kids. It, it makes it feel, it makes it feel real when we can, when we can have kids in the building.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, thank you.
Why Sean is giving us the patron input list, we are gonna check what we have online.
Okay, so we, we do have, got a few comments here. I don't know if you want to wait till they're more specific, but maybe we'll just read them now. One is related to the judge, the judgment levy and it says, "Please vote yes on the judgment levy. Thank you for all of your hard work for the students and employees of UNO School District." And the next one is from our folks at the Elks Lodge, Elks Club. The Elks Lodge would like to thank the district and board for letting us bring back breakfast with Santa. So, I believe that's from you guys, right? So, thank you for being here tonight and for your comments. Do you want to add anything else?
State your name for us, would you please?
I'm Cody Webster. I'm the president of the Elks Lodge here.
He's, he's the exalted ruler. Don't let him fool ya. And I'm Aubrey. Most of you know me. I am the president of the Elk Riders Association.
I just wanna, um, on behalf of the Elks Lodge, I'd like to extend our deepest thanks to UNO School District for the gracious, graciously allowing us to use the Vernal Middle School for upcoming breakfast with Santa on December twentieth. Last year, due to circumstances beyond our control, we were unable to host this cherished tradition. And it was felt deeply within our community. This year, we've started on our planning early to ensure we're ready to bring joy, laughter and the magic of the season to the children of this basin, of the basin. Your support in providing us this space makes all the difference and we truly am grateful for your partnership in keeping this tradition alive. Thank you.
And I want to say, for the first time in eleven years, I'm excited for school to start.
We don't have, we don't have anybody else that has signed up for patron input. Board members, business and action items. Two point oh one on the consent calendar. Board members, you can approve all of them at once or you can split them out and deal with them individually.
I make the motion to approve the consent calendar, including minutes from June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, work session and business meeting, the M H I service contract, the monthly board financial update and the early learning plan.
We have a motion and we have a section.
I would second that motion.
Todd Massey seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on first reading. Same deal on them. You can do them all at once or you can split them out.
I believe we have to split one of those out, correct? We have to table one of them? Oh, it's in the motion. Alright, thank you.
I motion to approve policy zero point one zero point zero zero two zero, community use of school facilities, the elimination of policy zero one zero point zero zero two zero, e-facility and ground use fee schedule and, and policy zero zero five point one zero zero zero, certified employee evaluation on first reading and table any action on policy zero zero five point zero six seven five association lead.
I'll second.
Who is the second?
Robin.
Robin, Robin seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on second reading, there are none. Adoption, two point oh four, adoption of tax rates for fiscal year 26, including the proposed judgment levy. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, but I got to make sure it's the right one with this new system. So I think it's, I moved to approve the following tax rates for 2025. Board local levy at point zero zero two zero one zero, capital local levy at point zero zero one three two nine, the GO bond payment of point zero 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 four three eight, and the discharge of judgment point zero 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 six five. I further move to pass the enclosed resolution adopting final tax rates and budgets.
Everything correct, Troy? We have a motion and we have a second. Robyn, I thought you wanted to be out of here by six thirty.
I did. I'll second. I challenged you to get us out of here by six thirty.
We're not getting out of here by six thirty here.
Wishful thinking.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Board members, any further discussion?
I just want to say, the judgment levy, I don't like it either. Like, so, I'll talk more about something that I've done proactively, that you actually assigned me to do. But anyway, I, I know it's difficult, and I know, but I just think when it's centrally assessed, we have no control over that. There's got to be some changes made. So, and I'm not happy either, but we've already done two point three million in rebate pack. So I think it's, anyway, it's just what, it is what it is. Right or wrong. So that was my comment.
Any other discussion?
Just one thought from our meeting last week. I think it went well. I think we, we helped clarify some of the issues, some of the concerns. And I think oftentimes, when it comes to these type of things, the knowledge of what it actually is really helps. And so we appreciate Troy and your group presenting in a way that you did. I think it helped clarify. I, I noted earlier that after that meeting, I have not personally received any, any calls prior to that I had. And so I think that helps clarify for individuals' understanding it really, you know, it was a, a set fee that we were, we were guaranteed. And it's a, a method that we recollect that that's been paid back to some businesses. And it, and it could be ongoing, and it, and it may not. You just never know where we're at with it from year to year. But I think the way we're doing our, our budget today helps us realize that we're not overspending, we're not underspending. We're trying to, to level that out. And we're trying to, to get the best, bang for the buck, I guess you can say, when it comes to tax money and those that pay taxes. I think that's our goal is, is to, to not lose based on inflation monies that just set. So I think that's, that's where we are with it. So again, thank you for your time.
And can I have one more thing? Just thanks to Wendy Long, who came to our meeting and really helped clarify for the taxpayers that were here and had them understand that one-time tax.
I personally sent her an email, a thank or two this week, and she really appreciated that.
Any other comments, board members?
I just, I just hope that, that there's better information in the community, that it's better understood what's happening, that we're not raising taxes. This is a one-time, basically, we, basically, we, I don't know what you call it.
Tax correction.
A adjustment to what happened last year, that it wasn't correctly assessed. And it's a correction. It would have been taxed last year, but it had been done correctly in the first place. And so that's all this is. It's not an increase. It's not permanent. It's a one-time correction.
Thanks, board members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to approve the personnel changes?
Board, any, we have one more motion on the budget. Oh, sorry, Troy. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm ready. If one of you's got it pulled up. I do not.
I move to adopt the following final original budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, for the general fund, Fund 10, or maintenance of operations. Eighty-three thousand, no, eighty-three million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. For the special revenue fund, Fund 20, one hundred and twenty thousand. For the student activity fund, Fund 21, one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. For the tax increment financing fund, Fund 26, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. For the debt service fund, Fund 31, two million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the capital projects fund, Fund 32, eight million, three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. For the school service fund, Fund 49, three million, nine hundred and forty thousand, twenty-eight dollars. And for a total budget of one hundred million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
You do good. You don't even get tongue- tied.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I would second that motion.
Todd seconds it. Any further discussion? We're going to put this to rest for one more, for a month or two, huh? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Hey. We're all done with that, Troy? I did skip any?
We, we're finished with that, yes.
Okay, personnel changes. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel changes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Robin seconds it. Dr. Leece, I thought you were going to call all them people and tell them the deal was off.
I want, I want to give you just a few minutes because we did upload an addition at like four oh one or something like that. So the memo you should be looking in, the list you're looking at should be twenty-nine candidates to fill new hire positions. We added ten really late, just because the school year's starting so quickly. We just wanted to get as many on here as we could. So sorry for the late adds. But there should be twenty-nine candidates to fill new hire positions. There should be thirteen employees who've been recently assigned to a new position, and, and seven candidates to fill extracurricular coach positions. So make sure that you have had time to look at that memo. I want to make sure you're looking at the right one.
How many were you saying? Twenty-nine? I don't know.
So, so twenty-nine candidates to fill new hire positions. Thirteen assigned to new positions, and seven extracurricular coach positions.
Yes. I just, I'm just, just totally curiosity. Just a lot of the newly assigned, or they just changing schools?
A lot of them are, or going to part-time to full-time.
So just, is that pretty normal?
Yeah, part-time to full-time.
But changing schools?
Or changing schools. Or, or we're in a different position at one location, and they're moving to a different, a different location and a different position in some cases, yes.
So what is the difference in an assistant coach and a boys' team assistant?
It's just mostly the pay and the amount of time that they're putting in. So the team assistants typically less time. They're a stipend. But an assistant coach is there all the time, and they're paid a larger stipend. The team assistants, we added those so that they could hire, for example, so Drill could bring someone in to just do choreography. Or someone could just bring in someone to work with the special teams for a shortened period of time. They typically pay those coaches out of the fundraiser, fundraiser monies. But we approve them so that they can use them as, as much or as little as they need to throughout the season.
Great, thank you.
So when we release a head coach, we also release team assistants and assistant coaches.
You okay, darling?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to oppose, Tanya? You want to stay away or?
Yeah.
Just an opportunity if you want.
I, I, I want it to be clear, I actually don't have any strong opinions or criticism of any of the new hires. That's not my reason to oppose. So I don't want anyone to feel personally criticized or attacked by that. I, I just felt that in the process, I, maybe the process that we used, we could do a little more to hear, like thoroughly hear the feedback from, that was just part of the hiring committees that were, that were really addressing concerns in the process. But, but also just that maybe we can, the process can be set up in a way we can be a little more objective just to make sure that we get the absolute best hires possible. That's, my only concern is that we always make sure that we're hiring the absolute best people because that's what we all want. And so that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Leece.
You're welcome.
Purchases over, this is informational item. Purchases over fifty thousand, Troy, RBA?
Sure. So we're at the beginning of the new school year, so our foods, our nutrition division is, is loading up on food for the schools. We have four hundred and four thousand dollars worth of various POs with four different vendors. With Basin Wholesale West, Prove Foods, Cisco, and Gaines. And a couple of those are open POs, so we're not spending that all this month. We, we oftentimes approve an open PO for a set amount of money. And then once they use up that money, then we approve another PO just so they can, can order on a regular basis. We have a large capital purchase for Trifera LLC. That is who we buy our laptops through. Kent Mansfield did a great job of, of getting last year's pricing before we, we changed over to an increased price. So we're spending three hundred and thirty thousand dollars on, on rotational laptop replacement. This is something that we plan for every year. And then we, this summer, as you can see throughout the district, we, we have resurfaced a lot of our parking lots, including right here at the district office, which was sorely in need of a, of a resurfacing. We spent a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which actually came in below budget, which is a good thing. And then Spectra, we are in the process of upgrading and getting our cameras throughout the district, on our schools, doing some right size and getting, getting some safety holes and issues corrected from when we did the original install a few years ago. We basically installed cameras right over the top of our, our previous cameras and then, even though they had different focuses, different, different range views and things like that. So we've, we've added to it and enhanced to get up to where our safety standards are. And we, we plan for that in the budget. And then GEW Construction, this is the district office parking lot, that, the old district office parking lot that President Shivers referred to, that we planned for where we demolished the old building. We are paving that area. We did some value engineering and, and were able to drive a couple hundred thousand dollars out of the cost of our lowest bidder. So that's, this will be a very good thing. And it'll, it'll solidify, beautify that area, provide valuable parking to our school, and be a resource for community events because those fields, that, that turf farm, the middle school auditorium, this, this will serve all those facilities. And then finally, Kengar Chevrolet, sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. This was an opportunity buy of a Suburban. There's a large lead time for Suburbans especially, right now, six to nine months. A district ordered one, didn't take it. This is on state contract pricing. The dealer called us up and offered it to us. We said, yes, please. Because we, we had planned in our budget to, to cycle out three this year. And rather than waiting several months to get one, we took advantage right now to get it at that price. Any questions about any of those? Any questions about any of those?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that calendaring item, you can do that.
Yeah, President, Board members, if you'll look at that link, you'll see there's a lot of back-to-school nights right here on the horizon, happening in the next week to ten days. Probably the most important things are in red, right? So, we have Opening Institute, which we'd love for each of you to attend if you can, on August nineteenth. That starts at eight o'clock AM in the Vernal Middle School Auditorium. Our first day of school, of course, is August twentieth. And, then we have the open house and ribbon cutting ceremony at the new preschool on August twenty-fifth. That'll be from five to six thirty PM, of course. You can come and spend the first twenty-five, thirty minutes, you don't have to be there for the, it's an open house. Just come and, and if your schedule allows, we'd love to have you there. We're gonna have Stout there, we'll have our preschool faculty will be there. V-CBO will bring a contingent of people that have worked on the project. Some, we might not have met because they've been behind-the-scenes people, so, that'll be fun. So, we also have quite a few from Utah State that'll be there. Dr. Tom Higvey is the department head of the Special Education Department. He's working hard to get us a faculty member assigned, and so, he's gonna come. There's quite a few that will be there. And then, our teen center open house and ribbon cutting will be on August twenty-ninth at noon, there at the high school. We'd love to have you there too if you can. I know this is a lot, I totally understand, you've got lives outside of being board members, right? So, we have Labor Day on September first, and then, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be September tenth. And, we already have the homecoming game just right there, so...
Less than a month.
Game will be on September twelfth.
Superintendent, somebody asked a minute ago, is the September board meeting or the October one that he called you?
It's the November one.
November one?
Yep, yeah, November. And, we're just doing one over there like we did this past year. Are there any other questions about the calendar? Just as always, you're welcome as board members to come to any of these events. Anything that sparks your interest or you feel like you need to be too, just... Don't need to ask permission, just come. Love to have you there.
Okay, thanks Superintendent. Do we do three point oh three Superintendent before we do close session?
The wrap-up?
Yeah.
Well, that's how we have it on the agenda, so...
We're gonna do it, huh?
Yeah.
Board members, my final comment, and then, we've changed this a little bit, I think, or if I'm confused from last year, but anyway, we're gonna have final comments and we have a need to go into closed session. So, after last week's meeting, Robin came to me with an idea about how maybe that we can work so the... I know most of us as board members, if not all of us, feel like that after we set our rates and we do everything, and then, they, a judge gives money back to somebody in Salt Lake and they, and we have to send a check back. Makes it pretty hard to balance your check there. So, letters, and we thought it was a great idea. Robin has spent a week working on it, I think we're on our fourth or fifth draft. She spent many hours working on it. So, Robin, would you like to explain that letter a little bit? And, we'd like our legislators to help us if we can get them to...
Just the philosophy of control what you can control. And, so, I just said, can we write a letter about the process, about the policy that's going on? So, I just drafted a letter, and here's a copy of it. And, it's to the Utah State Tax Commission and also to our legislators. And, do you want me just to read it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, it's not too long. "On behalf of the Uwena School Board, we write to express our concern regarding the current judgment levy process that follows valuation protest by centrally assessed businesses. These properties such as mines, utilities, telecommunications companies are assessed by the Utah State Tax Commission. When these businesses appeal and successfully reduce their valuations, the resulting tax refunds are borne by local tax entities despite the fact that the assessment and appeal process is managed at the state level. This year, the Uwena School District is proposing a judgment levy to cover a three hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and eighty-two budget shortfall caused by a large company's successful appeal of its state tax assessment. Over the past five years, the district has absorbed similar shortfalls totaling more than two point three million using reserves to avoid passing the burden onto taxpayers. Those reserves have now been depleted due to critical investments in education infrastructure, including the Central Cove Early Learning Center, the Ag Science Building at Uwena High School, and the purchase of district office in Naples. If the judgment levy is adopted, the average Uwena County homeowner property value of three hundred and fifty-three thousand will pay an additional twelve dollars and sixty-two one time while businesses, while a business with the same valuation will pay twenty-two dollars and ninety-five one time. However, the property tax appeal and judgment has become an annual occurrence. While these amounts may seem modest, the cumulative effect of repeated levies undermines public confidence in local governance and the truth in taxation process. This is not an isolated incident. Uwena County taxing entities, including the school district, water conservancy district, and others, have repeatedly faced budget disruptions due to valuation protests and subsequent court rulings." Oh, period, I need to add that. "These disruptions force local entities into truth and taxation hearings, which are often misunderstood by the public and perceived as local tax increases, even though they are simply corrections for state-level valuation errors." I mean, they're the experts, they should know. "The current procedure also puts the burden squarely on the backs of our public school students. We respectfully urge," this is the important part, and if you guys agree, "we respectfully urge the legislature and the tax commission to consider a statutory change that would make judgment levies automatic with notice to the taxpayer provided for judgment levies because they do not provide local entities with additional revenues. A judgment levy's..."
Read that sentence again.
Okay, did I do it? Sorry. "We respectfully urge the legislature and the tax commission to consider a statutory change that would make judgment levies automatic with notice to the taxpayer provided through the state tax commission. We propose eliminating the requirement for tax and truth in taxation for judgment levies because they do not provide local entities with additional revenues. A judgment levy simply backfills the previously established guaranteed amount based on authorized tax rate. A judgment levy is not a tax increase, rather, it is a tax adjustment that is necessitated by the appeal and refund to an owner of a centrally assessed property. This would keep the taxpayer in local communities, but it would take local entities out of the equation." And then, it just ended, "we appreciate your attention to this matter and welcome the opportunity to collaborate on a solution that supports both fiscal integrity and public trust." And then, if we were wanting to sign off on it, have all our names. Or, if you don't want to, that's my letter that you...
Okay, Board members, where it's illegal for us all five to get together and discuss something like this, I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to get this in your hands. Just because we've wrote it a few times doesn't mean that we can't write it again. We can change what we need to do, Robin's correcting stuff as she was going through it, so... They, but, I think maybe it would be a good thing and something that we could take to represent a true and honest way and see if we could get somebody to sponsor a bill that would take it up through. Now, some of you may have very different opinions of that, so, take this, think about it. We can talk individually or we can text. Maybe the Superintendent has something to add, but, I would like to have the board's feeling, if we're all on board with it, or some of us are and some of us aren't, however that goes, that this be a discussion item at our...
Board retreat?
Board retreat to... But, to discuss with the other districts when we meet at Blaming George and move this on forward and then have it ready to present to our legislators when we meet with them to support somewhere along the line. I think each one of us probably has people that we can show a letter like this to with influence and gain as much support as we can. We all have individual connections in different ways, and so... Superintendent, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I just wanna thank Robin, and I think it's well-written now, and it makes sense, right? It's been so controversial in local levels. If we could pass this on to the state, I think it would also open more accountability to get it right the first time. And, that's gotta be part of the sales process, right?
Board members, if there's one of you that is strongly against this and don't want us pursuing it or somewhat against it, then we probably should talk sooner than later. If you have some changes, why, let's get with Robin and the Superintendent and we'll get them changes down on paper. The federates written and the length of it is just about corporate. I don't think we wanna get something, them guys get so much stuff. If you give them a fifteen-minute reading project, they're gonna throw them a crack. Troy, do you wanna add something?
I appreciate Robin's question, absolutely nailed the spirit and what needs to be said.
All of you, it seems like summer was really short. Doesn't seem like it really shut still down, it seemed like it shut down a week ago and now we're firing back up. I have some grandchildren that agree with that, and so, they think that we just barely shut down too. But, we're excited about the year, we hope you're rested and excited. I looked at Erin a little while ago and I thought, she doesn't look like somebody that's had a month off. I'll bet it's been a really short summer, maybe the new school is ready to go. But, we hope you're excited, ready to go. If there's something that a board member can do, these guys really are here because they want you in the school district to be better. So, if you have an event coming up or something happening at your school that you feel like it would be a benefit for a board member to be there and you'd like him there for a few minutes, ask them, they'll be there if they can. And, thanks to all of you. Tony, do you have a comment? Robin?
Just hope you have a great year. That's, time of year is always exciting.
Yeah, I'm like the individual that was here earlier. I'm excited for school to start this year, just for the fact that, I'm really excited to see where we're gonna go. So, I'm excited about that, plus, there's some good things happening. I'm excited that every year we push you and we push you and we push you. At what point do you collapse when you say, "How much higher do we have to go?" And, I guess that's, I always look at my own employees that same way. At what point is the breaking point? You know, where do you push to where, you know, I can thank you as much as I possibly can, but there is a breaking point. And, I'd love it if you guys would let me know where that breaking point is, if that makes sense. Because it gets to that point, I mean, you know, you expect to be above state average. Well, how many times do you want us to continue to increase from that? And, where is that breaking point? And, so, I mean, in my opinion, we have a new goal, thanks to Ryan DeDais, and that's our graduation. And, so, it's something else we can work on a little bit, but we don't wanna put, again, pressure. But, I think some of the other things, if a student having success and they know they're having success, they're much more likely to stay in school. And, if they're not, Andy takes care of them, so, I think we've got it covered. But, the reality is, is we, I personally appreciate each of you, so, thank you.
Denise?
I'm excited. I think our school cultures are fun, I think the kids love going to school here. And, it's not just the principals or teachers, it's everybody involved, and so, I'm excited, so, it's gonna be a good year. So, thank you.
Troy?
I'm excited, this is my first ball kickoff working for the district. Got some, started the district, signed the ball scores, going youth.
Friday's first home football game.
Great high school, right?
Yep.
Denise?
Do you feel we could do that?
This is gonna be our best year. I'm excited about it, and we've got a great team, we've got some old pros in the room, they've been doing this a while. You know, their enthusiasm is very youthful, and so, I'm just, it's gonna be a great year.
So, Board members, we have a need to go into closed session, I've entertained a motion.
I move that the Uwena School District Board of Education enter into closed session for the following reason. A strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably pending intimate litigation.
Your motion, you have seconded.
I'll second it.
We need to roll following, Denise, would you start it?
Maynard, aye.
Massey, aye.
Michelle, aye.
Sure, Judge. Administrators, there will be no action taken after closed session, so, you're ready to proceed.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna wait for you.
Denise's doing pretty good.
What do I do, Tom?
We have a motion to go back into the business meeting. And then we have to get out of here.
And to close it.
I make a motion to re-enter our...
Wait just a second. Troy's trying to get our recording board. You ready? Oh, I'm sorry, Todd, we are ready.
Okay, I'll make a motion to re-enter our business session.
Todd Massey made a motion to re-enter our business meeting.
I'll second it.
Denise seconded it. All in favor say aye. Passage unanimously. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.
The motion we have is seconded. Tony McKee seconded it. Robin made the motion. All in favor say aye. As a unanimous. I entertain a motion to close our business meeting.
I move that we close our business meeting.